Pledge tonight.
Mr. Chairman, would you just wait one moment while I initiate?
Don't do that, Ari.
Social media, right?
Yeah, Marnie will give you the signal.
Okay.
We're still not good, Marnie?
Just one.
Okay, I'm good. I just.
You're good.
Okay, so Councilman Kagan, you go. The Pledge of Allegiance.
Okay. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We do have a public hearing before we go into any of our official business. So we have a public hearing on an application. It's looking for a zoning map amendment to block sixty-four seventy-one. I'm not going to read those. It's twenty-one, twenty-three hundred Cropsy Avenue. And a proposed action would permit a ground floor commercial use supermarket. Anybody other than the board that needs to address the board about this?
Would you please use the raise hand function?
Okay, anybody, Marnie? Oh?
Yeah, there's a raise.
Okay.
Hands, I'm just not, it's not come yet. Danielle, you want to speak on the public hearing or the public portion?
Public portion. Okay, so I move to close the public hearing. Can I have a motion? Okay, Sal, seconded by Jeff, all in favor? Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay, so we're rocking. So now it is the, before we start the public portion, I would like to request a moment of silence for those two NYPD detectives, Jason Rivera and Wilbert Moria, who were killed in the line of duty. And let's just hope this stops, but let's have a moment of silence for their souls. Thank you very much. And let's all try to support the mayor to get control of the city again. And, you know, the violence is getting crazy. Anyway, public portion. So now you can recognize that person who wanted to go on the public portion.
Patricia Capuano. If you would just unmute yourself, please.
Hi, good evening, everybody. I want to thank everybody for taking this phone call from us. This is Angelo Bruno, Independence Gardens, and Pat. My main concern is, and I saw Marnie today and I wanted to thank her, I think I'm finally, after speaking to Marnie, that I may be getting this reduced speed bump. Nobody got in touch with us yet. Hopefully that you could still help us with this. I know that you spoke a little bit about it. So I was wondering if you could give me any more information about it. That's between fifteenth and sixteenth Avenue on Shore Parkway.
I could answer this quickly right now. DOT hasn't given us a timeline for the installation, but as soon as we receive that, we will share it with you.
Okay, so you will stay on top of it and then get back to me, correct? Because I have to pass it on to the shareholders because everybody's excited. The weather's going to break. There's going to be a lot of kids walking up on Shore Parkway. And that's our main concern, that nobody gets hit with these guys speeding down the Shore Parkway.
Yes.
I think, thank you so much, and thank you for everything.
You've got it. Anybody else?
Yeah. Danielle Shapiro.
Good evening. I'm speaking for the Brooklyn Public Library. And I just want to break a few points, and then I'll put the information in the chat for everyone. We are offering tax help at several of the locations. We're partnering with ARP, the food bank, and Single Stop. Tax forms are becoming available at the libraries, but you need to call the libraries first to see which forms they have received or not received at this point. We're hoping that by mid-February, we'll start getting the state forms in. Some of the federal forms have been coming in. Our services to older adults has Ms. Raina back, backer working. She's our new digital literacy associate. She can help out with screen readers, phone and Androids, computer support, virtual programs, social media, Microsoft and Mac iOS software. There's more information and registration. I'll put the phone number in the chat, but she, it can be offered in English, Arabic, and Spanish. Also, for citizens preparing for the US citizenship, BPL is offering a range of services, resources, and programs for those preparing to become US citizens. We have classes, prep groups, and legal services, which are not meeting a person this time, but they are being offered online. The classes would meet three hours per week and are taught by experienced instructors. You can also join drop-in weekly citizenship prep groups led by volunteer citizen exam coaches. Okay, thank you very much. I'll put that information and what's happening at the High Line and New York libraries into the chat.
Great. Thanks, Danielle.
And we have. I saw Nancy Lulu. If you would just unmute yourself.
Good evening. Thank you, Marnie. Good evening, District Manager, Chairman, Board Members, and Attendees. First of all, I would like to start off by extending greetings on behalf of District Attorney Gonzalez to everyone. The District Attorney's Office is committed to protecting our Brooklyn communities. DA Gonzalez firmly believes that public safety is a shared commitment and a shared responsibility. Brooklyn District Attorney Gonzalez announced yesterday the creation of a new helpline and an email address to accept reports of the use or sale of fraudulent vaccine records to combat abuse that can, to combat the abuse that can endanger the public. The helpline will also assist the public in reporting the abuse of pandemic relief programs for businesses and individuals, including the Paycheck Protection Program, PPP, Economic Injury Disaster Loan Program, EIDL, and the unemployment benefits. So falling COVID numbers are very encouraging, but those who are selfishly selling or presenting fake vaccine credentials put the, our progress and healthcare system and the lives of vulnerable people at risk. We have no tolerance for this crime in Brooklyn, and we encourage anyone who has information regarding the use of fraudulent vaccine credentials or abuse of COVID financial relief programs to call our new hotline. So the hotline's number is seven-one-eight, and I'll put this in the chat, seven-one-eight-two-five-zero-two-two-five-five. And the email address is vaxfraud@brooklynda.org. Call and email, calls and emails will be answered by trained specialists at the DA's offices Action Center and will be reviewed by a dedicated team. Also, in honor of Black History Month, the Brooklyn DA's office will be holding a virtual event. More details to follow, and I will be emailing out the flyer to the community board sometimes next week. Also, please visit the Brooklyn DA's offices website, brooklynda.org to learn more about our press releases and the great work our office does, as well as visit our social media platforms to check on upcoming events and updates. And as of, as of always, I would like to encourage folks that would like to speak to us or have anything to address with our office to call the Action Center. It's seven-one-eight-two-five-zero-two-three-four-zero. And I would like to conclude by acknowledging and wishing our Asian communities a happy Lunar New Year. And thank you to Community Board Eleven for everything that you do. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening.
Thanks, Nancy.
I have no further hands raised.
Can I have a motion to close the public portion of the meeting? Okay, we got you on it. And seconded by Aleema Ruffa, all in favor? Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay, so Peter Abadi, seeing that you're here, you're on the air. So Assemblyman Abadi is, there we go. You're on the air.
I'm here, actually. I'm not here with Zoom. But no, I do miss coming down to the community meetings. I am not a big fan of Zoom. But my office has been working. We've been working with Marnie and you, Bill. Right now, the major part of my job is the New York State budget, which is due April 1st. So we're spending a lot of time on that, trying to make sure that we get the services we need. We also have a new administration in the city, so I'm trying to meet what is many new commissioners that are coming in, so we can make sure we have a report with each and every one of them. So it's great to see people on Zoom, but I want to see you all in person. It makes it a lot better.
There you go. Thanks, Peter. Thank you very much. Okay, so Ari, Councilman Kagan, you're on.
Thank you so much, Chair. So first of all, I would like to wish everyone who celebrates a great year of Tiger, Lunar New Year, Chinese New Year. Also, I would like to praise Community Board Eleven, especially, of course, our amazing District Manager, Marnie Kelly Spalier, for coming to every possible, you know, like event and trying to help resolve every possible issue, specifically coming to BJ's Store and trying to push DOT to do the right thing about this bike lane, which is a recipe for disaster. Personally witnessed a lot of situations that could end up in a tragedy. And by the way, Janine Kerikati from our office is also here right now on the Zoom. She's also there. DOT promised to come back to us, this proposal of a new design. We'll see what they will come up with. And secondly, also, Marnie was with us and Janine when we brought the New York City Sanitation Department and SBS, Small Business Services Department, to Eighty-Sixth Street to make sure that this popular commercial corridor, I'm talking about Eighty-Sixth Street between Bay Parkway and Twenty-third Avenue, will be livable, walkable, welcoming, hospitable to everyone, not like current situation when it's very difficult even to walk. And so sanitation promise to come back on a regular basis, on a regular basis, and to write as many summonses as possible. So first time we gave like, they gave like fifty-dollar summonses, warnings. They brought multilingual team, but everyone was told, every business was told that if they will not change their attitude and behavior, they will be punished more severely very soon. I believe like Marnie, we had like about twenty people coming from sanitation and SBS and every other agency. So that was very effective in my opinion. So we'll continue to monitor the situation at Eighty-Sixth Street between Bay Parkway and Twenty-third Avenue. We wanted to make sure that this place game is livable, walkable, and accessible to everyone. And finally, I want to say that, yes, I also tried to meet this every possible commissioner, every, a lot of new folks, including myself. So I just met yesterday this sheriff's office. I don't know whether you know or not. Very good Department of Finance Sheriff's Office. I want to put in the chat information. But they're trying to help us in sixty-second precinct, sixty-first precinct, and sixty-sixth precinct. This so-called paper license car plates, fictitious plates, you know, it's a big issue in Southern Brooklyn. They promised to do several raids and several operations on the evening time and night time in Southern Brooklyn. And usually, every operation is about fifty or sixty cars are towed. If they have like paper plates or like some kind of fictitious plates. They're also good in terms of all kinds of tax crimes, tax fraud. So I'm putting their information on chat and of course my office information. I will stay, I will stay longer. We'll listen to everyone. Thank you so much to every Community Board member for your great service.
Thank you. Okay, so I think Assemblyman Colton joined us. So if he is on the, on the Zoom, I don't see his face, but if he is on the Zoom, you're welcome to speak now, Assemblyman. Okay, he's on mute.
It could be a staff member.
We can always go back to him. We can always go back to him. Okay, so I want to ask Captain Chen. He has any updates, anything he'd like to alert the board about? Commander to six-two.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Bill, Marnie, and everyone on the board, Councilman Kagan, Peter, you know, Peter Abadi, I mean, yeah, just echo what Peter says. I rather do this in person, but you know, we had to, you know, do what we gotta do to protect ourselves and everyone here. Just to update the board, some of the recent event that transpired. Well, first of all, I would like to wish everyone that celebrate that Lunar New Year a happy year of Tiger. And I know for a fact for them, myself, I probably gained five pound of weight during the week. So just some update of the event that transpired over the weekend. Last Friday, we all aware that there was a fire explosion on Bay Thirty-Five Street, sixty-seven Bay Three-Five Street. Our officer responded, you know, expeditiously, and they were able to get there before FDNY got there. And they were able to escort the residents that was inside one of the house out. So for the job that they did, you know, they did, were exceptional jobs. You know, knowing that the house next door is already on fire, just explode and it's on fire without regard of their personal life, then they went in there and then escorted the residents inside out of the house. That were, I know the, you know, with FD, DOB, we closed down the couple blocks, you know. And there was PS one-on-one was right there, and that was a Friday, so the school was still going on. And then because, you know, there's a lot of traffic, you know, needless to say, with the school dismissal right around, you know, two-thirty. I appreciate everyone that's here that for the understanding, because what's going on. We're able to open up the street rather quick. And then the job was pretty much done, wrapped up around Saturday afternoon. And then now it's just, I think it's just some of the DOB operation for that building. And then that's that. This weekend, this Sunday, it's Super Bowl Sunday. Traditionally, that's kind of like an American holiday. I want to wish everyone to celebrate it like responsibly. You know, drink responsibly, celebrate responsibly, all right? My officers will be out there to try to make sure everyone drives safely and to get home to their family, right? Also, I think Dr. Law is having a celebration for the Chinese Lunar New Year this Sunday also on Bay Parkway. If you're, you're welcome to join us. I'll be out there to make sure everything went smoothly, but everyone else, you're welcome to join us to celebrate that Lunar New Year on Bay Parkway. And I think we started on Bay Parkway and Sixty-Fifth Street.
Yes.
Nice, Cap. Appreciate it. Thank you, Captain. So I see that, I can see Bill Colton's face now. So Bill Colton, our Assemblyman, you're on the air. Unmute yourself, Bill. There you go.
Yes, hi. Hello, everybody. We're in the midst of celebrating now the Asian, the Lunar New Year. And so we wish everybody who, you know, observes that a very happy and healthy new year. And the neighborhood has, I think, been working together very closely on a lot of things. One of them was, we had a very successful rally on the homeless center and giving the message out that this was a money-making business, and it was not something that helps homeless people. We actually had a spokesperson at the rally. It was over five hundred people. We had somebody from the Coalition of the Homeless who spoke against that center, that that's not the approach to take. We've really brought together a very broad coalition of many, many community leaders, and it went over very successfully. And we're now going to be following up with that because I think that just is the wrong location and the wrong approach. There's actually monies in the state budget to build affordable housing. And, you know, we have to look at dealing with that. That will be a permanent solution to the housing problem in New York. And I think, you know, that's something that we will be looking at very carefully. It's also, the good news is, we had a very large increase of monies for education, over $2.1 billion more. Now, of course, the challenge is to make sure those monies get down and be used for the children and for doing the things that will help children meet their needs, including, you know, gifted children and children who are underperforming, to develop the programs that will meet all of their needs. And so we're working on the state budget right now. I just got back last night from Albany. And I think that this is, you know, something that we have an opportunity. There's a lot of money in that budget, but it has to be used properly. And that's what, you know, our job is to make sure that now it gets to be used properly. So I think that, you know, we're going to see, this is an exciting year. I, again, you know, I'm very happy and pleased, you know, to be part of the CB eleven family. This is a family, a community board that really represents the community. So you're doing a great job, and I look forward to continue working with you. And I think we're going to make a lot of progress on a lot of different areas this year. So everybody, you know, let's stick together. The community has come together. And I think there's a lot of work that we're going to get accomplished as a result of it, and I look forward to it.
Thank you very much, Bill. We appreciate it. Thanks for your work, hard work. Okay, so now we want to dispose. We had a public hearing about twenty-three hundred Cropsy Avenue. And I asked Ross Brady to give the committee report, please.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Bill. And with thanks to Marnie for putting everything together and Laurie, the co-chair of the complete committee. We were able to meet last week to discuss the application of twenty-three hundred Cropsy Partners. Do you want me to read the block and lots in?
No, no.
The record, okay. Well, it's the building, it's building at the end of Twenty-third Avenue on Cropsy with Shore Parkway at the back of it. I think everyone knows where that is. It's currently zoned as an R-six, seeking to change that to an R-six C-two-four. The building that's, you've seen it, it's kind of three-quarters built already, is being constructed as of right. There's no land use applications or special permits required or variances for the residential and community facility uses. To let you know, the second and third floor are contemplated as a charter school. The applicant is seeking a C-two-four zoning designation to permit a ground floor commercial use for a supermarket. The size is thirty-five thousand two hundred and forty-seven ground square feet. The C-two-four zoning designation allows typical retail uses that cater to the daily needs of the immediate neighborhood. Again, it's contemplated to be a supermarket, and it could be a supermarket and partially a dry cleaner's alike, but it's for the daily needs of the community. There were multiple studies done of the neighborhood identifying a need for additional food stores in the district and this site in particular. There are a lot of people that travel different places by foot. It's contemplated there will be traffic, but there will be a lot of foot traffic as well. And those were some of the concerns that the board, I'm sorry, the committee had addressed, safety, traffic, deliveries, et cetera. So we reviewed the application, and we're recommending that the board approve the rezoning. It wasn't a unanimous vote. It was a vote of six in favor and one opposed with the following recommendations, important recommendations, that there be no loading or unloading to take place on the street. In fact, the developer anticipates that there's a, there's a loading dock interior with parking that would be off the street. That's very important. To minimize the impact to the residents on Twenty-Fourth Avenue and Shore Parkway, no commercial deliveries on Shore Parkway. The delivery is to be coordinated to prevent conflict with the arrival and departure of students. That the parking operations be managed to ensure that there's enough parking, enough capacity for all those uses. There are residents, there are teachers, and for the supermarket. The school buses that we ask, having to do with the, the community use, the school buses should not be stored on the street or within the building lines with the exception of when there's drop-off or pickup. The, and we're also asking that a traffic impact study be done within a year post-development, if we need to revisit this. We thought that those items would ensure that there'd be adequate parking. We wouldn't tie up Cropsy Avenue or put out the people on Shore Parkway or Twenty-Fourth Avenue and also provide for the safety of the kids and everyone involved. So with that, I place that our recommendation as a motion.
So can I get a motion to, from the board to approve? Okay, so Laurie, seconded by, there you go. Okay, seconded by Andrew. Okay, is there any other discussion? Okay, hearing none. We'll go by negatives. Is there anybody in the negative? Because this way, you guys can always speak up. Okay, so it's unanimously approved, Marnie.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for the hard work for the committee. Really a lot of good work there. Okay, so now we are up to my report. So to let you, you folks know, as you know, half the board comes up every, every year. So this year, half is due for renewal. Next year, the other half will be renewed. This is my, my year up. From what I understand now, the borough president put a new application process in. But I did mine in January. So Marnie, just to sort of clarify, I don't want to give out misinformation. Anybody who did it before has grandfathered in, correct?
Correct. They will accept those.
Right. So I would, I would almost ask, if you had done this before this new application was up, just let Marnie know that you did it, because then she could check with the borough president that all your paperwork is in order and in, so we don't lose anybody here. If you don't know if your term was up, you can also call Marnie. She'll let you know. But they did write an email to those whose terms were expiring. And just as in years past, I just want to let you know, if you just neglect this, you're off the board. You've lost many good people because they just think, I don't worry about it. I'll get it done in some time. You don't meet the deadlines, and it's been extended, by the way, to March fourth. So they really, you know, cutting a deadline for you. They're giving you a lot of play here. So there should be no reason why you can't get this done if you want to remain on the board. I'd like to really recognize, which is going to be wild for me, because it's always my street that's wacky. But I just want to say, this year, starting in January, the Department of Sanitation of Board Eleven deserves a lot of praise. They got on those streets. They grinded and prepared those streets before ice storms. They handled the eight to twelve inches we got exceptionally well. So they really are owed a debt of our gratitude for opening up those streets pretty, pretty quickly and keeping us safe. So wanting, you know, let them know that. But certainly, you know, I give them enough grief when they don't do it right, but they did it right, right throughout. So just tell them to keep up the good work. We appreciate it. We have two land use applications that have been filed for zoning amendments for sixteen-fifty-six West Ten Street and twenty-eighty McDonald Avenue. They haven't been certified by the City Planning Commission, nor referred to the board. We just heard about it. So we expect them soon, and then we'll deliberate with the committee and come back to the board when it's that time. Okay, so Marnie, you're up.
Thank you. So Councilman Kagan, you kind of took my report away from me, but, but I really want to thank you. You know, you just came into office on January first, and you hit the ground running on, on the issues that are really a top priority for this board. And I just want to thank you for arranging for sanitation and coming down to Shore Parkway. I know that's not your I know that's not your district, but you have many residents who, who were impacted and I know have complained and, and spoken out. So I want to thank you, but I just want to really explain to the board that, that we had scheduled this meeting between the council members offices in response to safety, safety concerns on Shore Parkway near Harbor Motor Inn, the gym and BJ's. So we had an onsite meeting with DOT to discuss ways to make that segment of the bicycle lanes and, and the driveways there safer for both bicyclists and pedestrians. So the behavior reported and, and observed. And while we were there, we saw all the drivers using the bike lane to queue up to gain access to the right turn bay at BJ's and the gym. Drivers using the sidewalk to travel from the area near the gym towards Caesar's Bay. And other behavior that, that's just really not safe or, safe or acceptable down there. While we can't or couldn't get DOT to, to move that bike lane to the north side of the street as suggested, we will work with them and try and make it as safe as possible. We also suggested when we were down there for DOT to look at if feasible the possibility for mirrors to be installed on the columns facing Caesar's Bay. So westbound, so that drivers, when they're coming down and pulling into those driveways can look up. Because I have to tell you, when I went down there and I pulled in to one of the driveways and I went slow because I know the area and I know the uses and how many people are out there. You cannot see. You have to come to a complete stop there and, and I consider myself a safe driver and, and look up. And, you know, we've gotten complaints and videos of bicyclists being hit by that behavior. So that being said, following the site visit, DOT is working to extend the vertical elements beyond Harbor Motor Inn in front of the crunch gym entrance to prevent those uses of drivers going through that lane. And they will collaborate with the pedestrian unit to add pipe bollards on the sidewalk. So we'll make it physically impossible for that illegal and unsafe behavior to take place. They will come back to us when they finish evaluating and doing their study. And I'm hoping we can, you know, just do these baby steps to make that area safer for the uses of that roadway. That being said, I just want to give a shout out to Harbor Motor Inn. Because in order to close up the area where the bike lane really starts, that so-called protected lane. In order to close that and put bollards at the end, we need a maintenance partner. DOT needs a maintenance partner in order to do that. And management on Harbor Motor Inn has signed up and is a willing partner to clear snow from there in order to make it safer. So we're looking forward to DOT's response. And then I also, as Councilman Kagan said, attended an onsite meeting with multiple agencies to discuss the ongoing issue on eighty sixth street between Bay Parkway and twenty third Avenue as it relates to, I'm going to say, a few bad actors. Mostly we have compliance, but what we, we saw when we were there was actually some, some stores actually put their fruits and vegetables in the parking lane for sale. It's not loading and unloading where you say, okay, the trucks are loading, they're going to take it in. They're actually selling out there. And, and while the sidewalk obstructions are a really big deal because that's a senior focus area. We have many senior citizens that shop on, on that strip. You know, it's also a vision zero issue. You now have the trucks having to pull out past there. And God bless those businesses, they're doing tremendous amounts of business to have the amount of trucks that are there making constant deliveries. It's just unsafe. And so I want to again, thank Councilman Kagan for bringing DSM light down. And I know you'll hold their feet to the fire on enforcement. And we look forward to working with you and your staff in the future on that. Some letters of support and letters of no objection I recently received. A venture is amusement park is looking for a letter of no objection to replace the existing ride with the same type of ride called a pirate ship. To Department of Consumer Workforce Protection requires the letter. So I wanted to bring it to the board before I signed by John.
Motion to accept, to write the letter. Okay, Ross, seconded by Andrew. Any objections? Okay, carry unanimously.
And now, the Federation of Italian-American Organizations is seeking a letter of support that we just received today for the implementation of an open street on Benson Avenue between Bay nineteenth street and eighteenth avenue for summer of twenty twenty two. The proposed open street will run from July eleventh to August eleventh between eight and three. And this is really for the summer program, so the children have space outdoors to do some activities. And I don't believe there'll be any impact to, to the businesses there on Bay nineteen.
Alright, I, I don't think so either. But I know here's a big body shop. Will they have access to those businesses?
Yeah, because Bay nineteenth, it's right after the corner, they can make the left on Benson on the side of Finbar.
Right, okay.
So the whole Bay nineteenth, it'll be that segment.
It's just Bay nineteenth between Benson, but it's not between eighteenth because between Bay nineteenth and eighteenth is on the eighteenth Avenue side. You're talking about the side street being, that's, that's what you say in your report. So it's not between eighteenth Avenue at all.
It's on Benson Avenue.
Right, on Bay nineteen.
No, between eighteenth Avenue and then we go right to Bay nineteenth street.
Okay.
Right, you come down Benson, you make a left on Bay nineteen. You have that little street, you have.
Yeah, yeah, okay, okay, we're good. We're good. They just didn't want us to get whacked with that was screwing the business.
No, you have a car wash and, and businesses there that, that couldn't sustain a closure.
Yeah, we're good, we're good.
So we'll send that letter of support, you want to put it up.
Take a, take a motion. Okay, Jeff's, Jeff's in and so is Sal. All favor?
Hi.
Any abstentions? Okay, we're good.
Um, just a reminder, there'll be no garbage collection on Lincoln's birthday this Saturday, the twelfth. Residents who normally receive Saturday trash collection can place the material curbside between four and midnight, Sunday evening for collection beginning Monday. This is as of now, I think there's a forecast for some snow, so there may be some delays. So you'll have to check the website or the three, if you get the alert, sign up for the three one one app, notify NYC, you get all these good tidbits from them. And finally, I put it out in the newsletter, but I just want to remind everyone that New York City Parks in partnership with DOT will be holding a public meeting for an update on the destination greenways, the Brooklyn Lee Ferguson Park to Shore Parkway to Coney Island. The report will focus on potential improvements to the Greenway in southwest Brooklyn. And it'll be held virtually on Tuesday, February fifteenth at six thirty PM. And while I share the information, I'll send it out in tomorrow's newsletter in case anybody missed it. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, Marnie. We do have a committee report, so Laurie gives us a youth and education.
Yeah, it's, it's a quick one. We, we had a, a youth and education committee meeting. And SCA, School Construction Authority came, Steve Gonzalez. And he gave us an update on the two sites that are located within CB eleven. The first one is L A D of Guadalupe and it's the main building, which is on seventy second street. And that is going to be leased. It will be a District seventy five school, which is a school for children with special needs. And it'll have a hundred and thirty two seats. It's going to open in September of twenty twenty four. They don't know the grades yet on that one. The second one is Saint Rosalie's Church on sixty third and fourteenth Avenue. You might recognize it as the test site for HHA. Yeah, well, you know, that building was demolished in two thousand and eighteen, it's not in design yet. Hasn't even gone to design. So, yeah, which is strange. So we asked that Marnie contact HHA to try to get sort of a time schedule with them to see what the story is about that. And then I mean, had mentioned that there's a new drive-through site on sixty fifth and thirteenth, right across from the funeral home. And maybe they could combine sites possibly.
There you go.
So when we hear more, we'll let you know. And that's it.
Okay, thank you very much, Laurie, as usual. All right, so is there any old business? Okay.
Is that me, yes or no?
Can you give me a paper? Of course. So, so you're on, you're not on mute. You're on mute now, okay. Any old business, any new business?
Hello?
Okay, hi, Dr. Law.
Hi. May I make a short announcement? Okay, happy Lunar New Year to everyone. Okay, this is Sunday, February thirteen, eleven AM. We had Lunar New Year parade on Bay Parkway, sixty fifth street at eleven o'clock. Okay, we have lion dance, folk dance. We have about four hundred people attend this event. Please come, join us. Also, I take this opportunity, thank Captain Chen and Detective Augusta, Vendra and all officer. Help us arrange this special event and also help us apply this permit. Thank you, Captain Chen. See you there, okay, on Sunday. Thank you for your help.
Thank you, Dr. Law. Anybody else?
Yes, Bill, Sonia. Sonia.
You're in.
Okay, I, if you read into the chat, I mentioned that we're going to be having a New York Police sixty second precinct. Appreciate your police officers on Saint Valentine's Day this coming Monday outdoors at eleven AM. So please come, I put our email address on there if you have a question. We're also having our sixty second precinct community council meeting, a Zoom, this coming Tuesday, February the fifteenth at seven thirty. You can also email us if you have a question. And the last item is, our branch is starting a campaign for Brooklyn Public Libraries' one hundred and twenty fifth anniversary jubilee. So if you want to send Valentine cards to any of your local branches, please do so because we are celebrating Love Your Library in February. And if you, if you want, you could email me, I put the email in there. And you have questions, I will try to answer them. And I wish everybody a happy Valentine's Day with lots of love. Have a lot of champagne and kisses and candy. The works.
You've got it, Sonia, you got it. Anybody else?
Yeah, one, just one quick thing, I want to thank the six two for all of their help and for being there at the vigil for Anthony DiNofio last week by New Yutri High School on seventy ninth street and sixteenth Avenue. It turned out to be a really huge event and it was just great that they were there to keep control of everything and direct traffic and shut down streets. And really appreciate that the six two was there. Thank you.
No problem, Laurie. We're just doing what we're supposed to do. Thank you.
All right, anyone, anyone else? Okay, so hearing none, stay safe. Have a good time on Monday. Hug your loved one, hug your person you don't even love, hug them too. But in any event, we'll see you next month, everybody. Have a wonderful.
Bill, everybody should hug themselves as well.
There you go.
During this COVID.
There you go. All right, God bless. See you, everybody.
Bless you too. Good night, everyone. Bye.